Good morning Toastmasters and dear guests. I am Barul Avrak from MCTC Club. Today, we are having two clubs coming together for this meeting. And I wish you all of you a very happy Holi. I think due to the festival, not many people have joined us. So, we were without any preparation for today's meeting. Apologies for that, for any inconvenience. So, as we start every time, let us take a pledge of... So, let us stand up and take that pledge. The mission of Toastmaster Club is to provide...
The mission of Toastmaster Club is to provide...
A supportive and positive...
A supportive and positive...
Learning experience...
Learning experience.
In which members...
In which members...
Are empowered to develop...
Are empowered to develop.
Communication and leadership skills.
Communication and leadership skills.
Resorting in greater self-confidence.
Resorting in greater self-confidence.
And personal growth.
And personal growth.
Thank you so much. So, some of the viewers, the numbers are going there. Let us either switch off our mobile phone or put this on silent mode. And be attentive and avoid any kind of discussion when somebody is there on this pitch speaking. So, as today, there is no present address. Let me invite Toastmaster of the Day, T F Seh, who has just joined MCTC.
Good morning everyone. And happy Holi to everyone. Today, my name is Seh and today, I am playing the role of Toastmaster of the Day. And I joined the Toastmaster last month. And I thought this is the great opportunity for me to organize the meeting for the first time. And I pray that for any inconvenience you feel. And before we start the meeting, I would like to inform you that the meeting is divided into two, three parts. One is prepared speech and the second is table topics. And the third is important, which is evaluation. Where, in evaluation, you get constructive feedback on prepared speech and table topics. Then, so that you can improve your public speaking and your speeches. Let's start the session with table topics. And today's table topic master is Saurav. I would like to, everyone to welcome Saurav.
So, we are going to play an interesting game. And it will be very thematically relevant because tomorrow is school and morning is about colors. And right over here, I have colors, a lot of interesting colors. But the interesting part is, it's not just the colors. If you flip the color, something related to the color will come out. And based on that, you can talk about the story or you can probably share your experiences. But try to be as creative with the colors as much as possible, right? So, with that being said, who is going to pick our first color? Please.
Let me try. I have no chance of pointing at myself.
So, which color would you like?
For that way.
You can see it. I can pick one out of the four of us.
You have picked one.
Any color.
Is it pink?
What does it say? The slipper.
Lotus. Any color. Maybe better color. But you should stay away from...
Morning, everybody.
If we have all on a long vacation and resume my interaction. And as Toastmaster said, don't speak about politics, no sex, no nothing. So, pink comes as a lotus. And the first thing the lotus tells you is, which way is the country being covered? But for me, pink is the color that reflects a lot of love, a lot of togetherness and a lot of communication between two young individuals. And the pink color actually comes from a mixture of red and the white. And then you can have different shades. You can have a darker pink, you can have a lighter pink. But different shades express different feelings. How strong it is to the colors that are much stronger. How weak it is, is that not weaker than? It very, I mean, I have not seen pink, I mean, apart from what you see in flowers. But it is manifest when you see a whole range of colors. In the, like in the Turic, B, in Amsterdam, B, in Sweden. You've got the pink, you've got the yellow, you've got the white, you've got the red, you've got the green. But what happens is, many of them are standard colors, which are the primary colors. When pink comes in, it comes out of a different hue. And with that, you start feeling a little different. I mean, otherwise... So? Yeah, you know, my absence. Otherwise, what happens is that, you know, there are four primary colors. Like in the printing industry, they use red, yellow, cyan, blue and white. And what you see is a lot of mixture of these in different strains. But if you see amongst the flowers, the pink color always comes out. The red then over, that's pretty standard. Thank you very much. I think I've made my point about the pink color. That would be...
You go next. And you start off.
And pick a color.
You can just say another one. Okay, white.
I'll give you a white. Let's see. This is the white.
The slipper.
Smoke.
Smoke. So, you have to speak on smoke.
So, it's small.
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 Hi, my name is Yavishri. So, I picked the color white. And like, the topic seems like quite a positive to me, smoke.
I uh, I guess I'll go with number two.
What's up with you?
Pinker then.
Pinker then?
Yeah.
Just uh. It's a different.
Cheeks.
Uh.
You're talking about cheeks. Uh. So um, the first thing that comes to my mind is the Nusseh line of yours, uh, usually during our title, um, chubby cheeks, uh, and um, I suppose um, if I were to think about cheeks uh today, I would relate it to our childhood, to our youth, how all of us as infants used to have those chubby cheeks. And um, it really reminds you how fast time flies, how soon um our body develops to shift away from those chubby cheeks and um, I suppose you could also relate that to how we mature as we grow up and how we gain more responsibilities throughout our days. And um, yeah, that's all. I will go.
Please come.
You would like sir?
One. I'd like, please pick a color. What else is this?
There are a lot of things there.
Brown.
There is a brown as well. Please go.
Farm, you have talked about farm. What is it?
India, the agricultural economy and farm has its own place in Indian economy. Around sixty percent of our population is dependent on the farms. So it holds a special place there in India. Moreover with farms, uh, I relate to positive feelings because uh, people working in the farms, farmers, they actually feed entire nation and should command out of respect. But of late, some of the things happening in the countries, uh, it is being shown that they are not being respected, which I don't know whether right or wrong, I am not going to go into that. Uh, with farm also, we put late to the richness, prosperity, who's anybody having big farmhouse is filthy rich and big shot and whenever we visit any farmhouse for any marriage or for any party, we feel privileged. Further on, uh, with it's about productivity, producers, greenery, as I said prosperity, so it gives a lot of positive signals to everyone. And as far as farms are considered, uh, now we are in the uh, Kambhik Jangal in Delhi, Gurgaon. So here also, we must endeavor to have some green places, some big paths, full of trees, full of birds, full of natural entities. So let us hope that some building more farms to have a sustainable development. Uh, here also, in cities also, it's not, it should not only be limited to some remote places in villages, but everybody we should respect and have a lot of farms to have, you know, ongoing sustainable lives. We also see in some of the biggest cities like Chennai, Benro, the water crisis. And one of the reasons are that farms and natural resources like lakes are being taken away from those places, you know. Lot of unsustainable development has come. So farms do have a special place here on earth and everywhere. So we should protect them and try to live with them.
Pick a color. Three, three. Here you go. The book, we call Emerald. Emerald is a stone, green was from this stone.
Good morning everyone. A man is a product of his thought, whatever he thinks he becomes. My topic is Emerald, which is a green stone. I quoted the quote because of the belief, sometimes people believe that if they uh wear the stone on their neck or uh finger, they can attract good luck or avoid any negativity. I do believe, it's not true, but I also believe it is not uh, false because whatever we think, we come, we become. So if we strongly believe in that stone, it will work for us, not in a like perfect way, but in a our, in our uh subsequently, so that we can attract good thing. If we believe that stone will uh remove any negativity from our um surrounding, it will help us to think in that way to to save the, uh, save our life from anything, that is all.
This one is our next please. Pick a color.
White.
It may have another color.
Yeah.
It's some of the.
Uh. Yes, I had something closer to white, yellow. Yellow, yellow.
Beer.
Beer, you're talking speak about beer.
Good morning everyone, my name is Lokesh. I apologize, apology, apologize is that I am little, you know tired, I could not speak, uh, could not speak well last night. I slept by one o'clock and again wake up by thirty. But I don't want to miss this meeting as it is done, decided in September forty twenty and it is just behind my house. On a walking distance. So yes, I chose this color yellow. So uh, every color in my opinion has its own significance. You cannot uh stay with only one color, life should be full of colors. Like in, if, if we think about astrology, there is a, you know, importance of every color. And yellow has its own significance. And for mythological uh views, we wear yellow clothes when we keep fasting on Thursday. It's the color of Braspadi, yes. And uh, so the topic we had this is beer. So I, I don't, I don't take any liquor basically, still I can explain. So I uh, I go for, I, I took participated in a few of marathons. So I don't know why after finishing of all marathon, they distribute the beers. Maybe this uh, I don't give the, the recovery energy after the run, but yes. Yeah, sometime it also you uh um, change your like uh mood as well. So one should try this and not get attracted with this. Yeah, thank you so much.
Would like to next?
Maybe next time.
Next time, why not? Everyone is right.
Maybe next.
Okay, with that, uh, I think Ken goes this off, uh, is there anyone remaining? I think he is the only one who is still going to pass, but I have few more if someone wants to try again. But do we have very much time?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, would anyone like to go for the second round? Uh, let it serve up, let it go. I need the. I'm trying to see this.
Do I think it's.
Okay. Pick the one, answer, it's the right.
Okay.
So again, this is a beautiful color, green. And the topic is parrot. Parrot has a, you know, two colors. Uh, one is green wings and the green color is red. So green color has its own significance, you know. It's, it's really, it's give peace, it's give kind of satisfaction when you see greenery around you. It's, it's give a kind of happiness when you see greenery, uh, wake up in the morning. The people who comes from Islamic path, you know, devil is saying that hara rangi khara hai, means the hara, the green color is a pure color. So there is a big significance for them, for the people who follow this uh Islam. Parrot is a, it's a bird. Pet bird, people uh, you know, keep this bird as a pet in their home. This is the uh, uh, importance of this like, this bird can speak your language, whatever you speak at their, at their home, they can follow that particular language and uh, um. Yes, again, uh, the, the is, this festival Holi is just about to come. And we cannot choose only one color, we cannot celebrate the, this festival only with the single color. Uh, we have to use all these colors. Thank you so much.
Are you so good? Any preference only then?
Huh?
Only this, other four, the purple, orange, blue and red.
With a group.
Atlanta is your proper, Atlanta is a lost city. Hi, good morning. Yes, you rightly said Atlanta is a lost city and I think there are many people trying to revive it in terms of not letting the name go down. So if you go Dubai, the largest mall, the hotel, restaurants, everything is Atlanta with the shape. And I think there is endeavor to keep picking up the old, old screw in the cities. And we always heard of Dhwaraka as this, as a place of Lord Krishna, which is now buried. And for the most remarkable was Modi, when the other day when he went, he went down under the water, located the city and they did the video what the old city was, fully surrounded by water and way down. You can't do anything, you can't bring it up, you can't drive, but it's like an archaeological thing. And I think what they intend doing is create videos or models and set up a whole thing all over here. And uh, so it's, I mean, in today's complex, Atlanta just would re- uh reflect more on how you revive the old things and bring them back. Because the old archaeology already does, the older things have a lot of value when you pick up things. I mean, it's like uh, the Indus Valley civilization, the people bringing them back to forth so that we learn a lot. Our national museums contain things that we see and imagine what people were like or what people were living like years ago. So therefore this is, if you look at it as a prospect of bringing our past back into our future, I think this is the best way to look at, see the revival of things that we've really lost now. And if you've lost, if we don't pursue it, there won't be anybody else, I mean, it'll die to own death. I mean, I was reading a book recently where there was an archaeologist who was excavating under a fort and rock products came up. Anyway, thank you very much.
So would like to go next?
Me too.
Two, yeah, I have to have three more.
I mean, I have finished the last one.
So I'm probably Roman Empire.
You have talked about Roman Empire.
Uh, so once again, I'm very bad with history, I don't know how to phrase my ten standards. So I have to tell what Roman Empire. I don't have much idea about it, but let's uh make something of it. So as far as I know, Roman, Romanians are ready with fighting and wars and they have fought a very great war that uh, that uh recently are all the nations just research about their methods and their ideologies and they follow in the current uh different type of uh fighting they ought to do. Right now, I don't think another war like world war is possible. Right now of another kind of way to fight is cyber war or like uh uh pathetic war that uh, the one example is COVID that just happened. So there are many other things that we can learn from Roman Empire is their architecture. As far as I know, in they, they would, uh, they had a great minds and they just made really good uh buildings and infrastructure in, at that time. That drainage system of uh, that was really good as we can uh, we can read from the news. Like in the rainy season, Mumbai just drains away during the rainy season. But in that time when there was no education or institutions, they just formed it and they were able to make really good drainage systems as well. So yeah, this is my take on it.
Would like to go next? Pick a color.
So. So of course, this is my favorite color and so I think it's my favorite color. So I would say like what a coincidence. So like if I talk about Ferrari, like they have a very rich history uh when it comes to like Formula One racing. And uh, you know like uh, when, when F1 race was like, was uh like, when it was, it was started, like only the few supercar brands were over there, like Ford, Ferrari and Mustang I guess and Lamborghini after that. But you know like uh, Ferrari have like still maintain that legacy. And uh, even like there are lots of uh major uh F1, F1 uh brands uh are there like Red Bull and uh, regular Mercedes, but, but, but still Ferrari managed to like uh, uh, win uh, win various uh F1, F1 competitions. Even like recently, uh, they have, they have won uh some, they have won uh Dubai Grand Prix uh in two thousand twenty-three. So yeah, that's, thank you.
So here's the last one, would like to go.
Color is orange. Orange.
Orange, not exactly orange, but very similar to orange. We have one of the color in, in Tiranga, our national flag. And we can also associate this color to one of the political party which is dominating at this point of time. Election is already here. And the third is orange is of course that fruit, I love having that especially in winters. It's a juicy, full of sweetness. Even my kids love orange and then in the winters, you are sitting in the sun having peeling of the orange and having the bite of that in your mouth, one, you see, it is very refreshing. And give you the taste you are looking for. And orange is a color of energy also. So you know, we associate uh revolution and you know, energy and enthusiasm with the color orange. And uh, very similar to saffron is uh, you know, kind of the color worshiped in India. Uh, during any holy event, uh, we of course take it and cover ourselves with the orange color or saffron color. So lot of importance it has got in India. And that's all, that's all I could think about of this thing.
I hope you guys enjoyed and as today is Holi, Matthias Holi is Holi and we are uh, then I think this meeting as a holy celebration. So the speaking session is over now, let's play some game and uh, I would like to ask two people to come on the stage. Any of two. I will give, give one person a paper and they have to read uh, read the movie name in, in his mind and then act in a way so that the other person can guess the movie. And after the guessing, guessing, the uh who has collected the card can go and the other one come, come and then the other one will uh, read the uh paper and.
Will I, if I will read the, I will act, you can guess the name after that.
You can go and the other one will come.
With paper.
Are we keeping a time limit on one word double base?
How, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I'll show this right.
Thirty seconds to one minute.
Twenty-one.
Okay.
Car, auto reaction. Now.
I know.
Running Ashar. Uh, recent movie. South Indian movie. The South Ashar movie, Chinnixs.
Would like to go? Anyways, yeah.
Four, Indian movie, recent on, made on the, to the audience. Recent movie. Four, four thirty, four. Four thirty is two. Do. Hamdo maaz. Two. Four thirty, four thirty two. Five, ten and two. Ten. Ten and two, twelve, one, twelve past. Twelve past, twelve thirty.
Four forty.
Four thirty is three.
Nine.
Zero.
Zero.
Four thirty okay. That's. Two thirty. Four B.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, so it's a show, should I tell them or just give, give, give him the?
Zero.
The need of relation. Seven, eight, nine, twelve.
Dhuvaana. Dhuvaana.
Dhuvaana.
Dhuvaana.
Dhuvaana and Dhuvaana.
Hold on, I have to.
Have you reviewed the movie name?
Yeah.
I've reviewed Dhuvaana.
So I will turn the code.
Four thirty movie. How is it? We put four, Charu Karan. Yes.
Delhi.
Delhi. Delhi, okay. Uh, Delhi was really nice.
Would like to go?
Three words. How many? Nine. Three words. Three years. Three years.
Let's invite them. You can do this. One word. Take a. Uh, don't. Yeah. Uh.
Dozen timor. Buzza.
Can you give me twenty seconds? All, all. All. Hi. You can, you can definitely like, uh, act in, like the actor.
Uh. One minute is over. One minute.
Then ah. Sorry, again. Let's try.
Sharanu please.
Two words. Mark. Run. Thor. Circle. Race. Stadium. Is it close to Bhad? Race, stadium, nothing, okay. Sunday.
Bhad.
Two words. Uh, some, 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 some. Doosan.
Fifty seven.
Bonbon. Chappchan. Bonbon, bon.
Muncher.
Muncher.
I know.
Uh, I'm getting a bit of. I have a little. No words. Hindi. Karla. 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 Hindi, Hindi, English. Second word is English. Second word. Two words. Second part.
No, no, lipstick.
Second word, second part. Okay. Okay, second word is second movie. Two, okay, two or second. This is English movie, correct. This is English movie.
They are Hindi. Dhanu.
The Ram. Pina. Pina. Two more words. P. P. P is first word, got it, second. Piku.
PK.
No, no, PK. Who will come next? Your. Your.
Let me take a break. One word. Four.
Hindi.
Okay, Hindi. Tujhe purani. Very old.
Okay.
Three word. Ink. No, 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 no. This is.
Okay.
Okay. Ranamakshay, he came to the. Holy, holy, have done a chat. I have ordered the name of the movie. I have ordered the movie. Uh.
Bop. Chupit.
No. Bop.
Bop. Chupit. Correct. Holy. Holy. Body. Salam. Salam. Uh chut, dhaban. Nai purani. Bichwai hai. Uh actress.
Thirty seconds. Let them.
Do you know the movie? Disha. You rise, Tony. Hundred seventy-five. Ninety-five. Then. Multiple days. Helmet, pugori, pugori. Uh this is a police. Pugori. Body, rope.
Gangar.
Sujan. 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 Gangar. Sir, sir. Or, yeah, that's a good. Kirti. I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Give four. I have seen three, four, six, anyone have to come again.
You have done.
How are you using uh Hindi words? Even the movie's name are in Hindi, whatever you say.
Salman Khan. Salman Khan. Uh movie. Okay. The dhaban.
I think it was an easy, if you have to.
Okay.
Two more. Sir, would you like to?
One minute.
I would like to refrain from using my character. All of them, all of them.
Gola, zero, bolat, raat. Gold. Good.
Gold.
Oh, good.
Gold. Okay, you can do. Last one. Sir, I would like to second. You share the. Even word.
Money.
Okay. So if anyone wants to add anything, you can, otherwise we can over the session for today. And as there were many uh uh role, like role player were not able to come. So we don't have any evaluation session. So happy ending to everyone and.
Just, just for the benefit of guests, this is not the usual meeting today. So yes, sir, also share the issue. Uh there are three sections to it. One is prepared speeches, where we had three or four speakers come with the prepared speeches and they come there. And then deliver those speeches. Then the uh table topic session which we had put in. The last is evaluation, where uh speakers who are there at this stage, they get the proper evaluation feedback from the event writer. From timing to uh filler words and the grammar, grammar mistake. Everything you get after the speech on this is structured, method good. So probably due to the positivity of members who need such kind of meeting. Thank you.